Fede Antero. Thank you all for being here this afternoon at the GTC Elementary School. Before we begin today's order of business, the chairman and I would like to clarify the purpose of today's public hearing. We are here today to receive comments and testimonies from members of this community regarding the proposed lease agreement by Elan for Mariana's Resort. Unfortunately, we will not be doing a Q and A session, but we will take your comments and concerns tonight, and we'll be sure to take it into consideration when we deliberate on the decision to either approve or reject the proposed lease. Now that we've clarified the purpose of today's public hearing, we will proceed with our meeting agenda. At this time, we'd like to inform the public that the joint committee meeting is being streamed live on cable television channel 23, the legislature's Facebook page, and the YouTube channel. We would also like to ask everyone at this time to please silence your electronic devices to minimize any disruptions. Again, the chairman and I would like to thank you all for joining us this afternoon. I am Senator Karina L. McGovern from the 3rd Senatorial District, Chairwoman of the Senate Standing Committee on Resources, Economic Development, and Workforce. And to my left, we have our House Representative Angelo Camacho from Precinct 5, Chairman of the House Standing Committee on Natural Resources. I now call this meeting to order. Today is April 24th, 2025, Thursday. It is approximately 5:37 PM here at the GTC Elementary School. At this time, I would like to recognize the Senate committee members who are present with us today. From the 1st Senatorial District, we have Senator Juanita Calvo and Senator Donald Magonia. From the 2nd Senatorial District, we have Senator Francisco Cruz and Senator Carl King Neighbors. And present with us today from the 3rd Senatorial District, we have Senator Manny Castro. With six members present, we meet the necessary quorum from the Senate side to conduct today's meeting. I'd also like to recognize our Legislative Bureau of Support staff from the Senate who are assisting the committee this afternoon. We have our legal counsel, Antonette Villagomez. Legislative assistants, Jolene Duñez Tagobal and Devin Macarones. Our Sergeant-at-Arms, Jonathan Delion Guerrero, and our IT, Delver Camacho. And now I turn the floor over to Chairman Angelo to introduce his committee members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the House side, we have our legal counsel, Mr. Joe Tyro. And before I introduce our members, save the best for last. No kidding. We have our legal assistants, Ms. Claire Sablan, Mr. Nick Ribbollman, and Ms. Camille. I also have my secretary, Ms. Benita Semen. And now to introduce the members, we have Representative BJ Blas Etal, Mr. Representative Joel Camacho, Representative Malcolm Omar, and Representative Vince Cobry Aldon. And we even have my first cousin, Mr. Bruce Camacho. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. We now move down to item 3 of the agenda. Can I please get a motion to adopt today's agenda? Thank you. A motion was offered and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. The agenda for today's meeting is hereby adopted. Thank you, members. We now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. The floor is now open for public comments. If anyone in the building wishes to provide comments relevant to today's agenda, please join us right here in the podium. If you are providing comments, please state your name for the record and the entity you represent. Please try and keep your comments under five minutes and relevant to the item on the agenda. The floor is now open.
Testing. Good evening, honorable members of both the joint committees. My name is Zeno Delion Guerrero Jr., and I am a resident here in Precinct 4. My house is just, I'll say, one minute that way. But thank you for your time. I just want to first start by acknowledging the need for development here in the CNMI. It's a very dire need. I just want to just acknowledge that right from the get-go. However, I do want to express my general opposition to this development, or at the very least, I really just want to implore all of you to really, not that you haven't been doing it, but continue to do your due diligence when it comes to examining this proposal and be cautious about, you know, how we move forward as a CNMI. Our economy is very fragile, and what we decide to do now will have, you know, implications for my generation and those younger than me. That being said, I just want to bring and state for the record that the Hotel Association at the NMI, Hanmi, has talked about how low our hotel occupancy rates are. And I just really think about, you know, what is one more resort going to do to those numbers, straining already a very shallow pool of tourists coming into the CNMI? The most recent numbers say 28.57%, and they also state, and this is happening on a monthly basis where they always talk about they need 70% to 80% occupancy. And so I just think about that number going down even further if another resort is made. And I just really, the question that comes to my mind is, is an investment in a resort something we need right now? I really agree, we need investment and we need development, but is this the right type of development that we need, is the question that comes to my mind. Tourist numbers are also very down. I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, talking to all of us about tourist numbers, but I'll just state for the record that those are around 28.7% between February 2024 and February 2025. They're down that percentage per the most recent numbers from the MVA. And so yeah, I just think about, is it wise to invest in a hotel now? And I just think about, should, and I know you have very limited purview on telling Elan how to spend their money, but I just really, you know, if I were looking at this proposal, I would really think about, is that money wisely spent on new development, or can it be used to improve existing development that they already have? Right? So that's just something that comes to my mind. I know there were also rumors, my parents were talking about rumors of Kensington suspending operations. I don't know if that's true or not, but regardless, people thinking that in our community is a red flag to me. Right? And that is one of their existing hotels. Right? And so it makes me think about, why are we investing in a new development when we can't keep the current ones we have afloat? Right? And that's deeply concerning to me. And so I also just think about what more we could do with the space up there up north. And I just, for me, it's not a perfect comparison, it's not a true success story, but I just envisioned Chumoral Village in Guam and how there are just so many spaces for small businesses, for nonprofits to take up space there. And I just think about how we kind of lack some of those spaces here in the CNMI. I envisioned those bungalows over there at Marana's Resort being sort of incubator spaces for small businesses, because I think a lot of people here, we just lack the physical space to sort of, you know, live out our dreams sometimes. Right? And so, lastly, my last point would be, I do want to see the lease agreement. I know, watched some of the recordings and how it's available upon request. I do also wonder if it's available to be put up on the cnamileg.net. I know very rarely people visit that page, but I do, and I love using that page. I look at the bills, the comments, and the reports. And so is there a possibility that that could be posted on there just for ease of access for the people? You know, it's one extra step, you know, to request somebody and to wait for a reply. And I think it'll just be very helpful for the public to have that document, because it is a public record. I remember that being stated in that earlier meeting. That being said, you are our elected officials. I voted for some of you, and I have trust and confidence that you have the public's interests and the island's interest at heart. So I thank you for taking the time to listen to me. As the kids say these days, yap 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 and taco this time. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Delion Guerrero. Floor still open?
Fede Antero, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Ignatia Evangelista. I'm a resident of Tanopak Village. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you and the committee for holding the recent hearing in Tanopak, of course, and today's hearing. Please rest assured that our residents are interested in staying informed about what is happening in our community, community and surrounding neighborhood. Firstly, I would like to highlight that Mariana's Resort was the main employer for most of our residents in Tanopak, both Tanopak and San Roque. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous. It was disheartening to see how the employees were let go and were displaced, jobless in 2018, when the previous administration decided not to renew the lease. It is my hope that this committee and relevant agencies will consider our concerns in regards to employment protection for our local residents and the future generation when negotiating this lease. Secondly, I want to emphasize the importance of the baseball field as a vital recreational and community asset. It serves as a venue for our kids to play, practice baseball, and for the community to gather, enjoy sports activities. I can proudly say that having that baseball field has played a significant role in our players' development, helping them grow, and ultimately become champions. The opportunities it provided truly made a positive impact on our teams, the Falcons and the Braves' success. Sisus Maasi, Precinct 4, Representative Joel Camacho and Malcolm Omar for really supporting our kids and our offhandy village activities. Thank you. I sincerely hope, sorry I've not done that, I'm sincere, I sincerely hope that this committee takes into consideration the baseball field for northern side residents. My other concern to take into consideration is leasing to one company. This is a huge property we are talking about. Given the current state of our economy, which remains unstable and unpredictable, it would be unwise to concentrate our resources and opportunities into the hands of just one company, especially one that is already operating three major hotels. Lastly, I don't know much about infrastructure matters, but I kindly ask that you take this into consideration in the lease negotiation, specifically our sewer line. It has been overdue for replacement. Again, thank you for allowing us to have a voice in these important conversations. We appreciate the opportunity to ensure that our community's interests are protected, and any decisions made are well-informed and in our best interest. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Mrs. Evangelista. Floor still open?
Hello. My name is John Lee, and I want to thank you for holding this public hearing. I felt very compelled to attend today upon reading from the newspaper that only three or a handful of public residents attended the other hearing. And I wanted to touch on, you know, Elan's plans here. And the promise to invest almost a quarter billion US dollars, I mean, let that sink in, right? In today's investment environment here, quarter billion US dollars, that's almost 400 billion Korean won, you know, with the currency exchange rate. And so the promise to invest, that kind of staggering amount is one thing, but how real is it? They own three of the five major hotel properties here, and they always report that it's empty, it's empty, and it's empty. And what is the logic behind building another huge resort over 1.5 million square meters of public land? You have to question, not the promise to invest, but whether it makes sense, just common sense, right? You have a 20% to 30% occupancy rate amongst the existing hotels, and they want to open another hotel with a quarter billion dollars? $220 million? That's hard to believe for me, frankly, just to speak as a private citizen. It's hard to believe. Now, as the other residents mentioned, we do need investment, but we need the right investment. I feel like that, you know, there's a lot of promises that come into the CNMI, but as representatives of the public, you really need to be able to discern amongst all those promises that come in and make a decision, make a wise decision on what's going on here. Amongst some of the promises, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare that much because I came last minute, but this property amounts to 1.5 million square meters. It's huge. Over 40 years and another 15 years of extension, 55 years. How old will we be in 55 years? You have to think about that. Now, to really judge how real this investment could or would be, I think it would be very prudent to look at whether they fulfilled their promises with their other properties. For example, COP was quite a big deal. They were granted another extension, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were supposed to build hundreds of rooms, maintain public access to the beach, and a whole laundry list of things, and apparently they have not done so. Despite that, they were granted a lease. And so if they're not fulfilling those simple promises while they occupied COP for 10, 15 years, then how believable is it that they're going to invest another $220 million when all of their properties are apparently vacant? It just doesn't make sense to me. Second of all, you know, investment is one thing, but I think it's very important to see what kind of benefit does the public get? Right? And so if you look at some of their practices, whether it's combining the hotel stays with their meals, as a private business owner, it's impacted me greatly, actually, our business. And I know several other small business owners, that kind of practice is really not friendly because there's no incentive for tourists to go out and spend money. In fact, in places like Hawaii, that's really looked down upon. I think there's even an antitrust case against hotels that do that kind of stuff, because it really, really kills small businesses in a small community like this. And, you know, I know that they've opened other small, not only that, I know that they've opened, you know, small business type of investments such as O-HAS and NC Pix. NC Pix closed, not sure about O-HAS, but, you know, packaging meals into your hotel stay is one thing, I understand that, you know, but to directly open a small business type of business right at the center of, you know, a small community and competing with other small businesses, I think that's really not a good look, you know? It's just not good practice, and I think it's very unheard of of a conglomerate like that to do something like that. I mean, can you imagine the Hilton in Waikiki opening a small diner or, you know, a restaurant, again, in direct opposition to another small, local small business? I've never ever seen that in my life. So, you know, the promise is one thing, but I really ask you to not focus on the promise of, you know, the staggering amount, but really look at whether it's real. How realistic is it? And it just, if it doesn't make common sense, then it's not going to end well. Lastly, I think it's very important to look at the precedent that the Hyatt to, I believe it's the Sheraton deal. And so that showed that basically you could lease public land, and without fulfilling anything like Hyatt promised when they renewed the lease, you could sell it. So I think it makes sense if, you know, if I was a, if I was the owner of Elan and I'm already here, I would say, okay, let's promise them this, we're going to build like a whole new mall, even though DFS just closed down. We're going to build this multimillion-dollar multicultural center and do all these fantastic things. We're going to build a water park, do all of this. But we're closing, you know, and opening our businesses on the side. I think that, you know, the reality is there's an incentive to lease public land, because most of the payment is based on the BGRT. And so as long as it remains closed or there is low occupancy, there's not much incentive to operate it, you know, to the fullest potential, just how it turned out in COP. Much of that renovation didn't happen until the last few years, and it was not even close to what was originally promised. And so, you know, you also have to think about, okay, are we going to get played or not? And how many years will pass by, even if it, even if it's real or not? Right? Is it better to do an RFP and do actual advertisement and find other players to bring in here? I mean, there's Marriott down south next to PIC, there's the Sheraton, all these great things are happening. But I'm not sure if the wisest thing to do is to add another property under Elan's portfolio, given the history, and just common sense. So I implore you to please use your best judgment and look beyond the promise of money, because I'm not sure if that's even real, you know, if it's even feasible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Floor still open?
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Senate and the House of Representatives. My name is Juanai Denorio. I made a presentation or testimony on Tuesday, but I spoke in vernacular, and I found out that not everybody who were there fully understand my presentation. So I'm here today to try and speak Spanish so people can understand. First, first and foremost, after the Tuesday public hearing, I intended to go to COP yesterday to play golf. My intention is not to play golf. I wanted to find out more as to Elan's operation. So I asked the front desk clerk, I said, what's happening with the restaurant? He goes, sir, we close, I mean, we only open on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Said, so I've golfers. You know, we're always coming here to eat before we go out or after the game. We, you know, we don't open, so I said, okay. So, playing golf, like the gentleman have stated earlier, their promises, they were supposed to upgrade all the pavilion by the beachside, but they're all in jungle, and it's the native that are going to use that. They would clean little bit so that, you know, the kids are safe and they can be able to utilize the place. They have operated COP for years, and if they cannot do that, like the gentleman have said, promises is a promise, but you have to be true on your promise. Second, I really don't believe in monopolization, most especially in businesses. When we're going to open business like Mariana's Resort, let's try and bring in new investors, fresh money. Not, I mean, I have nothing against Elan, but if they cannot fully operate their businesses and close on days because of financial, perhaps financial difficulty, then I don't think that they'll be able to operate and do what they have promised with the $220 million. I live in Asma Twist, and I walk my dogs at the backside of the golf course, like I said on Tuesday. I don't know if I'm stealing, but I feel I'm not, because I'm picking coconut for my chickens. And the entire golf course is the fairway, the greens, tangang are, are so big. And so I believe that to do the golf course in Marpe, they will have to start from scratch, start all over again. You cannot just cut down those tangang and have people play golf. It's impossible. So, again, first, I don't believe in monopolization. Second, I really believe that Elan is not going to be able to do as they have planned for the Marpe. We have this 1,449 to 221 square meters of property from our covenant, and I don't need to explain this further, from the covenant to the constitution, it is very specific that all public land in the CNMI belongs to the Northern Mariana's descent, Chumoral and Carolyn. My eight children are all grown up, they all have family, they all went up to DPL to apply for homestead, and they were denied. Reason? There's over 4,000 pending homestead applicants. When I was in Congress, I was the When I was in Congress, I was the individual who introduced the development on the golf course in, uh, King Fisher and Lolo. The intention of these golf courses are land banking. The land banking is to let the company operate for fifty-five years, forty plus fifteen. Then after that, DPL can be able to subdivide this into a thousand square meter or seven hundred square meter so that they can give up to those that qualify for homestead. I really believe that it is insane to even think that a family, all the married kids are still staying with their parents because they don't have enough land for them to build a house. Please, let's be mindful that our young generation, married generation, young generation, they have to have their own life. They have to be independent. And right now, with our situation here, most of these young married couples are still living with their parents or out renting. It's a shame that they have to rent a place to live here on Saipan where the land belongs to them. Again, if we are going to continue to develop Mariana's Resort, like everybody have said, we don't have the number of tourists for that hotel. Think of our young married couples in the cinema, because they are the real owners of all public land here, not DPL, not businesses. We have to put our locals first. Please, please. We talk about employment. When the Japanese company first opened Mariana's Resort, people from Tenopax, San Roque, Matuis was not in place yet. They were the ones who were working up at the golf course and the restaurant, the hotel. The Japanese have given opportunity for the local people to be employed. And until they close, things have changed. And so, again, I'm being very mindful of our young people. In the proposed lease agreement, it is very specific that employment will be for cinema US citizen. Once again, the last census, there are more outsiders who are not enemy descent Tamoro and Carolinian than Tamoro and Carolinian put together from Rota, Tinian and Saipan inclusive from Northern Island. I've done a research from all the stores here in San Roque, all the way down to Garapan. They're all in violation of our law, thirty percent of employment should be local. No, they're all outsiders. So again, please protect the Tamoro and the Carolinian. And like I said on Tuesday, I've done a research on King Kameha Maha School. I've done the research on the native Indian and I've done the research on the native Alaskans. There's a bill there that supposedly going to aim for the benefit of the Tamoros and the Carolinians. Unfortunately, it was never passed. It just died. So gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please, please protect our local residents, Tamoro and Carolinian. Thank you and good afternoon, good evening.
This is Mr. Tenorio. Floor still open?
Good evening. Good evening, guys. Uh, sorry, I wasn't totally prepared, uh, but, uh, I have a few things to ask the joint committee. First of all, thank you guys for, uh, coming out to the village and giving us a chance to speak. Um, question, why a new and separate lease on the other end of the island? It's kind of unnerving if they already have current operations in the south where all the infrastructure, like the roadways and stuff, is being improved uh, for the sake of their industry and for our, uh, ease and quality of life in the community. Why are they so intent on moving away from that? And, uh, why would a large company, a company as large as them, consider expansion during a downturn in the economy? Uh, they're talking about two hundred and twenty, twenty million dollar investment during a time where we see some of the lowest, uh, revenue generation from tourism. Uh, have they ever addressed this or even spoken on how they're gonna get their, their investment money back, their capital back? Um, they're banking two hundred and twenty million dollars of renovation on an, on an industry that doesn't have real, uh, numbers to support that kind of investment right now, guys? Um, let's see, uh, going back to it, uh, five hectares, one point five million square meters for money. Uh, every day our dollar gets weaker, guys. Um, who knows, within a year, it might be worth half of what we receive, you know, depending on the international economy, depending on inflation, America's economy. The real power and the real wealth li- lies in the land ownership. The landlords throughout history control, uh, the value of the land. I know in America, there's a lot of, uh, real estate opportunities going on and it's driven by a real estate market. But really, guys, it's the people that own all this land that stay wealthy. It's, the wealth is in our wealth, especially with Article twelve, especially with indigenous lands. Our wealth lies in our ability to hold and control our land. We need the authority. When we lease something out for forty years, that's four decades of us not being able to say or do anything with our own land. Now, we can pass laws and kind of guide these businesses and maybe usher and direct and regulate industries, but we don't have control over our land if it's leased out like that. We see a lot of abandoned buildings right now on prime real estate properties, right? We can't do anything with them, guys. There's still ten, fifteen, twenty years left on these leases. Now would be the time to pick them up when they're not generating revenue, but they're turning into ISOs. Uh, people come here because it's beautiful. It's not beautiful right now. But we can't touch this stuff because it's already under somebody else's authority. So all these long-term leases, while it doesn't give ownership of the land, it gives control over the land. Now, on Tinian, right across the water, the Department of Defense is over there and who's to say that they're not gonna expand in the next five, ten years? I mean, uh, political climate across the planet, right, changes on a weekly basis sometimes. Who's to say that, uh, Elan won't lease out these five hectares, uh, with the intention of a resort and then turn around and just lease it out to the DOD, which might totally go against our own, uh, benefit as cinema citizens. But we won't be able to control that either. Right? So, I mean, the DOD right now has much deeper pockets than tourism. Right? So, I mean, four and a half trillion dollars or something like that is their budget? You know, just a small percentage of that could, uh, could totally dwarf whatever, uh, revenue generation Elan is proposing. Right? So if we're using tourism numbers as a basis for the negotiation of how to, uh, sell this land off to Elan and they get this lease and they turn around and they work out a deal with the Department of Defense, we might have just shorted ourselves hundreds of millions of dollars, guys, because their industry doesn't work on the same parameters as tourism, nor does their gener- uh, revenue, uh, sorry, generation of revenue, it doesn't rely on the economy. Right? So that's a huge thing. I mean, that's a very easy flip for them to say, yeah, we're gonna build a hotel, but they're already closing down or proposing to close down current operations right now that are much smaller in the middle of the island or to the south where it's heavily populated. Right? So what's to say that they don't just turn around and, and, uh, flip it over to the military for fifteen times? Uh, what we were thinking of as numbers wise in generation of revenue and like I said, we're gonna short ourselves incredibly if that happens. These, uh, leases, the long-term leases, I don't know if they include a breach of contract, like if there's no activity or revenue generation, but we need to start looking at this stuff, right? Um, if they're gonna be shut down for ten, fifteen years, then maybe we should turn it into like a indoor hydroponic produce farm or something like that. They got a ton of those things in, uh, Southeast Asia. Singapore is producing hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, Plumeria Hotel would be a perfect example of where we could go vertical and if another storm comes in, we don't have to deal with six months of not being able to get anything shipped in because we will be able to feed ourselves, right? So we have a lot of options with the infrastructure that doesn't necessarily have to do with tourism that might never come back. If we are planning on banking on tourism and, uh, we want it to come back, I have never wanted to tour a third world nation, country. Right? Uh, tourists go to the happy, the healthy, the wealthy places because that's where you're, you enjoy yourself, right? You see the luxuries um, and all the extravagance, right? And then you go back to the normal life. So if we want tourism, guys, we need to improve the local quality of life. We need to get back to being happy, healthy and wealthy people. So people want to come here and enjoy what we have, what we own. But, uh, little by little, we're not really in control of the things we own, right? I mean, the cars that we kind of own are owned by the bank, the house that we kind of own might have a mortgage on it. And now the land that we technically own has long-term leases that might not, uh, finish in my lifetime or somebody else's lifetime. So owning something is not necessarily enough if you don't have the power to control how it's being used. Uh, I don't agree with, uh, spreading out the tourism. Uh, we need to improve the quality of our service and not increase the quantity of places you can receive this service. Um, spreading ourselves thin is not very good. Um, quality tourism brings in better dollars with a lower negative impact to our island. I think we all felt that when, uh, Chinese tourism came in and we saw higher numbers in people than we'd ever seen, but lower numbers in generation of revenue because of the overhead it took to maintain places like Grotto or the sewage system, water treatment plants. And they weren't really spending a lot of money to begin with. So it was a lot of high traffic and there was a lot of places for them to go, but again, the quality wasn't there and now we are suffering because of result of lack of quality. So if Elan can't maintain three smaller operations that are currently existing, why do we trust them to maintain a much larger operation that's so far out of the improved infrastructure that's designed to carry tourism? Um, how is it gonna affect us here in the village? Right now, we already got buses and cars flying by at fifty, sixty miles an hour. You know, it's, it's tough out here in the north. But Saipan is not that big. You don't have to be an operation in the north for northsiders to benefit from it. Right? I mean, I'm used to driving thirty, thirty-five miles one way to work. If you want the job and the money is there and you're great at it, it makes you happy, you're gonna go there. And like I said, there's no place on Saipan that takes more than twenty minutes to get to. So I feel like this program can benefit everybody in a positive or negative way regardless of where it's at. But if we're gonna entrust the largest land lease to one company, maybe we should pick a company that is successfully carrying out their operations currently as opposed to a company that's, uh, proposing to shut down smaller operations. They might say something like consolidating all of their operations in one place might be cheaper, but we all know that's not true. Um, everybody that uses G4S knows that you don't have to have a G4S office everywhere that you have a G4S security guard. Right? So you, they can have a main headquarters, main office for engineering and one supervisor and they can just send out their engineering team to whatever needs engineering. Same thing with landscaping, same thing with, uh, room service. So consolidation, um, of operations into one place, especially here on Saipan, I don't think it saves that much money at all. Um, but yeah, if, I guess the main points I wanted to, to bring out was, uh, maintaining control of our land, because we're so hard on, uh, protecting ownership of it, but there's really no value in owning it if we don't get to decide what to do with it, guys. And, um, and also if we are gonna keep it to one person, maybe a better performing one, not just one that just owns a lot of stuff because they have really, really deep pockets. It's really easy to buy stuff. Right? And like I said, DOD is right across the water. If we're gonna give it to one, maybe we give it to the one with the deepest pockets. Right? Because we really can't control or trust anybody with their intentions at this point. So we have to maintain some kind of control regardless whether it's public or private that we're giving it out to. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We didn't get your name, so could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Darbo Balta and I live here in, uh, Precinct Four.
Thank you, Mr. Balta.
Good evening. My name is Annie Pico Civer and I'm here to just express my concern regarding, uh, Marana's Resort Hotel. Like Mr. Kamak, I've, you know, always said that we need homestead for the newer generation because there's no more land for them. So when you look at this, this, uh, paper here, it says, uh, one thousand, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-two square meter, I mean, land that is not being used, vacant. So are we gonna give to just one person? Or can we share it for, with others so we can get more revenue by doing these things here? Like, uh, golf course, for example, I'm a golfer and all the golf course that are leased under the government are so expensive, except for King Fisher, because it's privately owned. Before I can afford to play golf because it's only twenty-five dollars at Marana's Resort. But if they're gonna improve that, they will have to take their loss. So here we are again, back to square one. The people that cannot afford, that don't have the means like me, I, I don't play golf anymore because I cannot afford. So they, they, they taking that privilege away from us by offering so much money and then they fixing it and then they charging us. It's for the tourists. You charge separate for tourists and separate for locals. And also, why do we need so many hotels? Economy is bad. I have two tenants that asked me to reduce the rent because Kensington reduced the hours. What am I gonna do? Put them on the street? No. We have to consider it too. So most of the workers are outsiders. Please consider this thing here. All of us, the government needs money. But if you're gonna lease it out and it's gonna take many years to make money, it's useless. Open up something like Guam where locals can come in and open their business. Let the locals enjoy it, not just, um, a foreign investors. We're only tourists, but now there's no tourists. So how can we make money? That's all I'm asking. Consider the people that needs this in the future. Think about your, the new generation, the younger generation. Don't think about ourselves. We've already been there, done that. But what about the younger generation? I know it's easy to, to ask, but we're just so many individuals here asking for, for the government or the legislature to, to reconsider the lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pico Civer. Floor still open?
Um, Hafadee Tiro Kamorale. My name is Sheila Jack Babalta, for the record, and I am- and I am a resident here of Precinct Four, born and raised on the island of Saipan. Thank you so much, joint committee members, for being here, for making time again to have this public meeting in our village. Uh, we're really grateful for all the effort and the energy for you to be with us tonight. Tonight, we did hear a lot of good points and a lot of concerns from our community members. And this is just a fraction of our community speaking up tonight. We heard things around the size of the property, being about 1.5 million square meters, the length of the lease, forty years with an option to extend for fifteen. We heard about infrastructure improvement needs for this precinct and how this development will impact power, water and sewer. We've heard about the need for homestead programs, sports facilities, youth spaces, employment opportunities. And we've heard a lot around Elan's portfolio and concerns around their financial stability. I, for the record, do oppose this lease. I believe there are other ways that we can steward our land and other ways that we can invite communities from around the world to visit the Marianas. The point that I want to uplift tonight is that we here in the Marianas, we live in and around abundance. I've traveled so much around the world advocating for our communities, uplifting our voices around issues like climate change and militarization and the impacts to our environment, around colonization, being colonized for over five hundred years, not having a voice in Congress, not being able to vote for president. And we're not alone. We're not alone in that type of situation, especially in the Pacific. But here in the Marianas, we live right next to the Mariana Trench, the deepest point in the world's ocean. Many researchers and scientists are so interested in our place in the world. We have beautiful beaches that many have said they've never seen before. It's so calm. We have a large lagoon. We have a culture that's so rich. We still carve and sail the traditional way. Just today, a canoe from Guam sailed in to be with us for the Flame Tree Arts Festival. And that's such a beautiful way to connect and practice culture. And so many were gathering down at the canoe house. Many community members stopped by to welcome them into our home and to just share in this very rich environment that we're a part of. It's such a blessing. And the people, the people here in the Marianas are the most hospitable, the greatest hosts, and we know that. And we receive that kind of feedback from tourists, from friends as we host here. And that's the kind of lifestyle that our people want to keep. We wanna sustain that lifestyle, but we wanna be comfortable, right? And so these infrastructure improvements for sustainable energy, you know, we just need to take care of our basic needs, power, water, sewer, and then address the social issues. We have addiction in the community, poker, drugs, gambling. We have environmental cleanup, you know, from the war. And now with all the plastic pollution, we have a lot of work to do. And relying on tourism, relying on outside investors is a symptom of a sys- of a systemic issue. And now is the time for us to address these systemic issues that keep us in this cycle of always relying on outside help and outside resources to take care of ourselves. And so now is the time to think about our collective vision of the Marianas. What kind of place do we truly want to have? What kind of place do we wanna live in? You know, indigenous communities are talking about a hundred-year plan. What is the one hundred-year plan? What is our five hundred-year plan? We think about and speak about our future generations so much, but do we actually have a vision? Because to this day, Faraland de Mendoniza Nuus is still being bombed. That lease is coming up, but we have to think about these long-term impacts made by the decisions of today. And so this is a long-term decision. This is a long-term lease that will impact all of us for generations. And so I want to emphasize the amount of time that the community will need to continue to provide input and, you know, have a better understanding of what this impact will, will be for us. And so again, thank you very much for being with us tonight, honorable members of this joint committee, and thank you for spending time in our village. We're very proud to be from Precinct Four. Saggy North is our hashtag and lifestyle. And it's um, it's a beautiful lifestyle. It's peaceful, it's safe for our children. You know, it's, it's something that is similar to every part of the Marianas. On our sister islands, Intinea and Lutha, you know, in the northern islands. This lifestyle is a blessing. And um, and I think that many of our people know that. Deep down, we know that. We just, we just understand the needs of today, living in this modern world, you know, and wanting to really take care of our children, make sure we have opportunities for our children. So at the end of the day, we want peace, we want joy, we want happiness, right? We just want a healthy place for our people to thrive. And so, Sisus Masih, Mundang Luana Sisus Masih, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babalta. Uh, floor still open? Okay, um, looks like we have no other comments. So at this time, we will close the public comments portion of the agenda. Moving on to the next agenda, um, item on the agenda is old business. We have none. Uh, next is our new business. Under new business, we have the proposed lease agreement from Elan Group for the Marianas Resort and Spa. I now turn the floor over to Chairman Angelo for an overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, just a quick over, overview of the proposed lease agreement. Um, this is a, uh, proposed lease agreement that will consume a million four hundred forty-nine thousand and two hundred twenty-one square meters. Um, the proposal is set for a forty-year lease term with an additional fifteen-year extension if granted by DPL and approved by the legislature. Um, this proposed lease uh will also contribute over four million dollars in public benefits. Um, this proposed lease uh proposes a homestead infrastructure project at two point five million. And it also proposes a swimming pool. Um, this, I guess they set aside funds of the uh one point five million. Uh, baseball field funds at four hundred thousand. Um, a lifelong education center at two point eight five million. And I guess with this proposed lease, the LECE will invest a minimum of two hundred twenty million for renovation of existing structures and new improvements on the premises. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. So um, I, I like to take this uh time to check with the um, committee members if they would like to share anything. Recognize, uh, Rep. Joel Camacho.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not gonna reiterate what I said on Tuesday, but I do, I do like to thank you, you and the senators, Madam Chair, Chairman, for having this public hearing here in North uh that really benefits our community. But um, maybe because I have been getting some messages about, uh, constituents are inquiring about what's the next stage after this, right? Since, because it's not a Q and A. So maybe if you can just indulge the, you know, the people watching or people that are here, what's the next phase and after this, you know, so they can get a better understanding of the process. Thank you.
Sisus Masih, Congressman. Um, so before I recognize Senator Manny Castro, I'll answer the question. Um, so the next steps for the committee is to obviously um receive all the comments and testimonies that have been brought um to the committee by the community members. And then from there, uh, we will call DPL and Elan for uh more discussions uh with regards to the issues and concerns that are being brought forth by the community members. Um, and then from there, um, we will decide as a committee whether we need to conduct more public hearings or deliberate on a decision on whether or not to approve or reject the proposed lease. So that's um where we at right now. We are in the process of receiving comments from the public. Um, and then we will call DPL and Elan in for more um clarifications and um addressing, yes, uh, just bringing in a lot, a little bit more information. We did, um, in our last public hearing on Tuesday, I did share that the, the chair and I did send a letter to DPL requesting for more documents with regards to their financial position at this time. We wanna make sure that, you know, as many have you stated earlier, that we're not just making all these promises. I mean, the amount is pretty significant, right? Uh, but we wanna also make sure that, that, that promise will be fulfilled and we, the only way to do that is to show us the numbers. And so um, uh, we do have some more questions for DPL and Elan. Uh, I hope I answered the question. And again, you know, I hope that everyone had a, uh, received a copy of the, uh, you know, it's just a quick overview of what the proposed lease, the, the packet is like this thick. So um, you know, I just summarized it uh very high level just to give you guys an idea of what the proposal looks like. Uh, but please feel free to um request for a copy of the lease should you want to with the legislature, any one of us. Uh, I will check with our LB IT if we can post a copy of the, a PDF copy of the actual lease on our legislature's website or maybe even the Facebook page. Uh, so I will check with our IT on that. Uh, and so with that, I recognize Senator Manny Castro.
Uh, thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to thank uh the members of our community, both private citizens and a member of the small business community for coming out and give, giving public comment. Um, again, like one of the um, members of the community mentioned, it's uh, sometimes it's not just about quantity, it's about the quality. And the public comment that was given tonight had a lot of substance. Uh, so we appreciate um, you know, you, uh, all of you coming out. And I see everyone out here, it's uh representing from Precinct One to Five. And um, just wanted to say thank you for uh, for stating your concerns and um, and being active and engaged in, in this process.
Thank you, Senator. Any other members? We're good. House side? Recognize Senator Calvano.
Thank you, GTC. What a wonderful uh campus. And also the former hearing in Tanapa too. Um, this is an eye-opener as we go along in all the public hearings. There's a lot more different perspectives and points of view. So it's very valuable for the executive and the, the Senate legislative side to hear the voices of our people. And it brings more credibility as far as, uh, you know, going back to Elan and going back to DPL and really informing them of uh your valuable input. And you know, this, this is part of the big process as far as the deliberation and the big decision that needs to be made. So thank you so much for coming out tonight and we really appreciate it.
Recognize, uh, Rep. DJ Atto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And like my colleagues, I'd like to thank the members of the committee for coming out and sharing your, your sentiments regarding this lease agreement. I think it's important as a committee as well, Madam Chair and Mr. Chairman, that we, we notify the general public that public hearings are not the only, only avenue to provide comments to, to our respective committees for not just this uh lease agreement, but for other legislative matters. It's, it's, it's a little bit intimidating to come up to a public hearing and speak in front of everybody when you're not comfortable in doing that. But it's important to allow other types of avenues for our people to share their thoughts, whether it's in support or against this land lease agreement. And I think that's, that's a honest on us as, as committee members is to make sure that, that's, that's a possible way of getting information from them. Uh, obviously, the last couple legislature have been faced with multiple lease agreements and this one is the largest one. It's also one of the very first ones that was ever leased out in the, uh, through the legislative process back in the late seventies, you know. So uh, it's something new for our generation. But if you take that into consideration, our generation are in our forties right now when this lease agreement first started. So the generation before us made those decisions back then and a lot of them have passed already. So I think with technology, we should open up those avenues and we should take this, uh, these sentiments that we've got gathered from our, our community to sit on the table again with DPL and Elan so that we can be a part of this true negotiation between DPL and Elan because when they negotiate the actual contract agreement, we weren't a part of it. We received this through their negotiations and were used, we're not using, we're, we're extending our positions to the general public so that they can provide their, provide their sentiments regarding the lease agreement. I think it's important that we, we share this as a community and we should open up opportunities for all types of, of uh avenues using technology or other matters to, to get the public sentiment rather than just public hearings because it's, it's intimidating even as, as members of, of the legislature. If we go to hearings and it's not our hearings, it's a little intimidating to speak in front of people. But I thank the, the members of the community that spoke up because I think it's, it's important. But not everybody's the same and we should give that opportunity to everybody. And we'll continue our work and we'll see where this leads us to. Thank you again and a good evening.
Sisus Masih, Rep. Atto. Chairman, any final words? You're right. Um, okay, so again, Mundang Luana Sisus Masih. Uh, to everyone who came out tonight to provide their comments and their sentiments, uh, this means a lot to us because we do need the public support and buy-in should we decide to approve that. But, you know, and so um, we are very cognizant of, you know, the decision that we are um going to make and that will affect generations to come. And so we would definitely make sure, uh, you know, we continue to do our due diligence and ensure um the public that we are um doing um everything that we can for their best interests. Uh, so um, if, uh, all the members are good, we now move on to the next item on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn today's um joint committee meeting? Thank you. Um, a motion has been offered and seconded. Can I get a, to all those who um in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, today's four DPM. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out tonight.